All right, good evening, everyone. We'll get started with our proclamations. We have two this evening, one from Counsel Fenton. Begin with Counsel Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to offer this proclamation this evening in honor of the migratory bird treaty city designation that Dave Bloneyars, Dr. Dave, and Regreen Springfield. Dave, if you could come right up to the podium, so I'm going to say a few embarrassingly kind words about you and the group, and then we'll hand over the proclamation. So, several months ago, Dave and his organization, as well as National Fish and Wildlife and other organizations, including the Springfield Museum Association, contacted me about an effort to have Springfield designated a migratory bird treaty city. And at first, I had some questions about what that meant, and the more I learned about the designation and all the work that went into making it a reality for the city, I was just incredibly impressed with the work that this group, under the leadership of my neighbor, Dave Bloneyars, and others in Regreen Springfield, in what they've put forward to make this designation for the city. So, I showed up at this event that they had at the Springfield Museums, thinking I was, you know, maybe doing Dave a favor by showing up to a small event for him, and it turned out that there were well over 100 people there, and it was a really well-organized and well-run event from start to finish. And I think, if my memory serves me, oh yeah, 27 communities. We're one of 27 communities across the country that are a part of this treaty, the most recent of which to sign on, I believe, was Seattle. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, rather, into the record, and then we'll congratulate Dave and his team. I know there's a lot of, I see Dave working with a lot of Cathedral High School now Pope Francis graduates, so happy to see those folks here tonight supporting Dave in this effort. So, "In the city of Springfield, Massachusetts, May 22, 2017, whereas the Springfield City Council is always pleased to recognize the great city of Springfield on one of its finest honors, and whereas the city of Springfield has been designated a migratory bird treaty city by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and whereas the urban bird treaty program is a unique collaborative effort between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and participating U.S. cities, Springfield being one of only 27 communities across the country, and whereas cities become effective sanctuaries for birds and other wildlife with an environmentally aware citizenry dedicated to learning about conserving birds and their habitats, and whereas the city of Springfield, Regreen Springfield, and the Springfield Museums work diligently to secure $49,000 in funding to assist the initial programming and habitat enhancement components of the project. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Springfield City Council, on behalf of the city of Springfield, hereby goes on record and proclaims Springfield a migratory bird treaty city, and congratulates and thanks the Springfield Museum Association, Regreen Springfield, Dave Bloneyars, and the entire team for their efforts in securing this designation. A proclamation sponsored by myself and all councilors, May 22, 2017." So, Dave, thank you for all your efforts, and this is really a great honor that you've bestowed on the city, and the least we could do tonight was to honor you with this proclamation. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor. It's not me, it's our team of folks, and I'd like to invite all of our Regreen team up here, plus our summer scholars from the University of Massachusetts, who are going to be working on this project. Come on up, guys. Because this is a neat little project, one of several we've recently worked on with the federal government, between the U.S. Forest Service, the Housing and Urban Development, as well as the Fish and Wildlife Service. We've been really able to increase the awareness of the urban landscape and the urban forest around us. And Counselor Fenton, when he was at our event at the Science Museum, where the mayor was there, the folks from the Fish and Wildlife Service came up from Washington, some of our foresters, but Mike was able to relay us a personal story of seeing bald eagles for the first time in Springfield. So, that to us is the realization that, and I know the Veers and the Stevenses see these all the time, and to be able to have seen bald eagles make a rebound is one of the great things that I've seen in my lifetime. But more importantly, what we're doing is planning for the future and planning for the preservation enhancement of our bird habitat. Most of that $49,000 is going to education, mostly of children in low and moderate income neighborhoods. So, we have a strong initiative, working with HUD to do that this summer and through the fall, also working with Renaissance School at Abbey Brook. We're going to be working with Pat Sullivan at the Parks Department. We're going to be working with the Science Museum. And you'll be hearing about the Urban Bird Trail, which is going to be part of Springfield, which you never know who's going to want to go on the bird trail, but it's going to be a virtual tour of bird habitat in the city, some great spots that you can go bird watch, and whether it be in Blunt Park, Forest Park, Van Horn Park, along the Mill River, along the Connecticut River. So, the last thing I'll do is shut up. I just want to thank our team here, who have done so much to put this proposal together and to have it accepted. It's the program, Migratory Bird Program with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, started in 1995. New Orleans was the first city to sign up, and we only have 27 across the country. So, it's very unique, all the way from the administration level at the Department of Interior are actually the reviewers of the communities. It's very strict, and we're only the 27th since 1995. So, it's a great honor for the city, and you hear the migratory birds out in your yards every day, and a lot of those are our resident birds, but they do stop off here on their way to Canada, or north even, and then on their way back. This is one of the stopover spots. So, Springfield is welcoming to our natural resources and our feathered friends. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor, for supporting us, and all of the councilors for your recognition tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave, for your good work. I was wondering if you would introduce your team.
Okay, yeah. Liz and Mike Stevens here are in the McKnight neighborhood, and they've been strong advocates for the environmental issues in the city, big, strong on biking. They're working on the bike trail with Pat Sullivan at the parks, and doing a terrific job with that, and are helping us on the bird treaty. And also, we've established the Arboretum at Forest Park, and they're one of 49 volunteers that are working to catalog over 500 trees in the park in cooperation and partnership with the Arnold Arboretum of Harvard University. So, we're doing some cool things that someday we can tell you more about, so that's a pretty cool one. And then, come on up, Matt and Jack, and Joey. Matt Saboter here, and Jack Mulcahy are both our summer scholars from the University of Massachusetts Center for Agriculture, and they're both UMass students, going to be a sophomore, and a junior. Matt has worked with Regreen Springfield since eighth grade, and Jack worked last year as a summer scholar, both Springfield residents and happy to help us. And I think, Marcus, you know Matt's mom, you had to work together, Suzie. Yeah? And then, so there you go. She said to make sure you got introduced, he's embarrassed. Okay. Joey, come on up. This is Joe Pellegrino III, longtime resident of Springfield. Joe is a master's student at University of Mass. He's wrapping up his research work, which involves Abbey Brook, which is behind Van Sickle and Renaissance School. He's working on the environmental issues of it, but then on the second side of it is the environmental justice component and people's access to green space in the city. He's going to be working with Professor Mike Di Pasquale this summer on looking at people's value of green space in the city, the access that they have to the green space and other open space throughout the city. So, Joe's going to be, he's a shaker and a mover on the environmental side, and we hope that we can make a difference in the quality of lives in Springfield. So, who else we have? Come on up, Bev. This is Bev Veer. Her and her husband are both on our board, Rich Veer, the longtime residents of Springfield, live in the Roosevelt Avenue, and have a few friends that fly over the house every day, bald eagles. So, been instrumental in the support of Regreen Springfield and charter members of our board when we started the three days after the tornado in 2011. And then, Nick Weiss here from Hartford Terrace. Nick is a member of our board who's been helping us for the past five or six years. You can tell he's big and strong and can plant a few trees. So, that's been an instrumental part, and always given us a hand to make sure that our projects go off without a hitch. And then we have Liz Content here, who joined us this year, or last year, as part of the Forest Park Arboretum, which is going to be a terrific component, and they've had some fun. You've been out counting, measuring, and cataloging trees that are part of a project that we're working on, as I said. That one actually got some funding from the State of Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and they provided us seed money to buy a label maker to put labels on trees. So, that's another one you'll be hearing about over this summer. So, that's a pretty cool project. So, okay, Mike Fenton, I'm long-winded, but you called me back, so, all right. Thank you. And I know Melvin's here, and Counselor Rook, and I met Counselor, who did I meet? Gomez, the other day, out in front of our offices at Regreen. I know Counselor Ash has always been a big supporter of what we do, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. One more tribute tonight to be presented by Counselor Gomez.
This far down this year, very, very good story. I found out about Seattle when I was a young man, and I spoke to his parents, and he mentors, was mentored by his father, his mother, his father, and his parents, and his senior angels, and actually a brother, and senior girls, that I was a kid, and my old brother and my younger, he all family has a lot in common. Just to give you a brief overview of Seattle, Seattle was the current Junior National Championship on the pole vault, the completion circuit place over on the state weekend in the Pacific Garden. They were 500 verified athletes for all women, and she was a 17-year-old national championship in the pole vault. So, I'm really just out of recognition to, to order, but I just want to tell you about how proud I am that, you know, you come from World One, that, you know, you were the, you were one of the greatest in what we do in our neighborhood, and the things that you have accomplished in your future is, as well, that you remember that last year, you felt a little bit short, and you should have, and you worked hard, and this year, you are home in the pole vault, so I'm so proud.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you're a national champion, you can't just, you guys don't come to playoffs and stuff, so I'm so happy that you guys, if you want, I like, if family is standard, and also do that, this is accomplishment, and also, and my dad, and my little brother is here. All right. City of Springfield and the City Council, a recognition, the Springfield City Council would like to congratulate Seattle and Seattle on winning the 2007 Junior National Championship and wishing them the best of luck in future competitions in 2017. Sponsored by, and all of us in the rest of the City Council. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I don't really talk much, but thank you for this. I want to thank my parents for keeping me in the sport, even though it's a lot of monies, and it costs them a lot, but I like to thank my coaches and all the people who've supported me over the years. That's all I have to say.
All right, that concludes our proclamations, and we'll begin with our regularly scheduled hearings meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Edwards. Present. Counsel Allen. Absent. Counsel Rook. Absent. Counsel Adam Gomez. Present. Counsel Walsh. Present. Counsel Marcus Williams. Present. Counsel Ash. Here. Counsel Twiggs. Absent. Counsel Shay. Present. Counsel Fenton. Present. Counsel Hurst. Present. Counsel Bud Williams. Here. Counsel Ramos. Present. Present.
Counselors and our guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All cell phones on silent mode, please. Item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is a report and recommendation from the Board of Public Works regarding the installation of PVTA landing pads at various locations throughout the city. This item was sent to committee at the last regular city council meeting.
Counsel Walsh.
We've done this about a week ago. We have representatives from the PVTA, from the Springfield City Council, and we have in the audience, we have, we have Dave Elgin, I believe, correct? If you'd like to come to the podium, and he did a great job explaining exactly what the PVA is trying to do. They're installing 143 ADA compliant landing pads, so they're actually doing this because of handicapped accessibility. It's totally different than the other issue with the PVTA, which is eliminating bus stops. This is something that is good for the city, that our committee recommends for full passage tonight, and hopefully unanimous vote, because this is going to help people, and you're able to do it because you received a grant of over $100,000 from Mass DOT. They have to get started, because they have to have this all done before the grant runs out, so I'm hoping that there'll be a quick passage tonight, and they can get started. And I believe you had some pictures of what it would look like, and are they being passed around to the council?
There should be a picture in everybody's packet of, yep, what they will actually look like. So, thank you. And did you want to say a few words?
Sure. My name is David Elveen. I'm a planner with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and I work full-time with PVTA. I'm joined by PVTA's interim administrator, Carolyn Hart Lucian. Counsel Walsh has done a really good job of summarizing what we're hoping to do. This would be to install 143 5-by-8 concrete landing pads at locations in the city where we currently have bus stops that are either muddy, or there's grass that's uneven, so it's difficult for people who may be using wheelchairs or scooters. But this will also make it more convenient for all riders. They won't be stepping into mud or have that kind of inconvenience. We've made sure that all these locations will be retained in our bus stop consolidation project, so you can be assured that every one of these is at a location we intend to keep for the long term, because it has good ridership. So, I'm very appreciative of the committee's review, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel Williams.
I have a question in terms of the bus stops.
That the reconfiguration of bus stops, I guess we'll have a further meeting on that?
Yes. We'll be having a number more meetings soon, I anticipate, as soon as we get over into Union Station. We'll be engaging with our riders there. We have several more. We've been out, I think we've had 20 or so meetings with neighborhood associations. I've seen many councilors at those meetings already, and we've been asked for, come back for a repeat performance, so we're going to have more meetings there. We're going to be talking to our root committee, so there's a lot more meetings in the process. We anticipate we'll be coming back in several months to you with a finalized list that we recommend be retained, and hopefully enshrine that in the municipal code in the fall.
So, all the stops on the chopping block can be reworked back into the whole scheme of thing, or you can do a portion of them?
We're, we started with about 46% of the stops being recommended for removal. We're now down to about 38% of the stops. So, we're roughly a little more than a third, and the truth is, if anybody calls and has a concern, we get right on the phone with them, we go right to the map, and we put it back on. So, if anybody has a concern, we want to make sure that that is foremost addressed.
PVTA is a very vital clog for urban Springfield, and we don't have the transit situation as Boston, where's a lot of public transportation. People really rely on that to get from point A to point B, so eliminate, I would want to expand, and you know better than I do, regionally, it's just, we're in a tough situation.
Yeah, our situation is definitely different from Boston. We've gotten a lot of really good feedback in our meetings. You know, some of our bus stops are as close as 400 feet together. That's about 10 bus lengths. So, it's those kind of spacings that we're looking at moving out. But we want to make sure that we have stops near senior facilities, near apartment buildings, where we have high concentrations of people who may not have cars. So, our outreach is going to continue, and as I said, we're very interested in putting back any stops that people believe are valuable.
Yeah, because people use those stops, the ridership, to go to doctor's appointments, to go shopping, to go visiting, to go to the mall, to go downtown. So, I think Counsel Walsh is going to stay on top of this, because I don't want to end up eliminating a stop, and then after it's done, someone says, "Well, this stop got eliminated." Because I know there was one up on Westford Circle, which was on the hit list for, under the past administration, and I just hope that it's not on the hit, continue to be on the hit list, because there's a lot of handicap affiliations associated with those situations. Are these stops, are these the white ones, the pads, the new white ones I see popping up?
No, we haven't installed any yet.
What's the color scheme? What are the?
Is it just plain white concrete?
There's nothing up now?
I'm sorry?
You haven't installed any of them?
No, we haven't installed any.
Have you changed your color scheme, then? Because if I ride down State Street, I see, I see a white bus stop.
Oh, the shelters. Yes. We do have a new style of shelter.
I was going to say, yeah, I didn't think I was seeing things.
What's your architectural opinion?
No, that was not, I mean, it got my attention. You could see it. So, those are, that's yours?
That's right. That's right.
And the pads will look similar to that?
No, the pads are simply concrete pads. They will be, they won't be at, we already have pads at shelter locations.
Well, the facelift, facelift looks real good.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say that in our discussions with this particular issue, that you have been so cooperative, that I feel strongly that if there are issues with the stops they want to eliminate, that they will be addressed, and they will be sensitive to the neighborhood's needs.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seen none. Chairwoman, Counsel Walsh, I just want to thank you for doing the work in committee on this issue.
Yes, should I do that in the form of a motion? Do we have to take that out of committee as a motion, or we just ask for full passage?
No motion necessary. Would the clerk please recognize the councilors in seat number two and seat number three?
Counsel Allen.
Present.
Present. Counsel Rook.
Present.
Present.
And petition, item number one. All those in favor of approving the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Items two through six, Mr. Clerk.
Items two through six are recommendations for orders to change the rules of the road. Item two is a order allowing one-hour parking anytime on Main Street. Item number three is no parking on Newland Street. Item number four, I'm sorry, item number three is no parking on Newland Street. Item number four is to install a stop sign on Sheldon Street. Item number five is to install a stop sign on Greenwood Street. And then number six is to install a raised crosswalk on Alden Street.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seen none. All those in favor of approving the order, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number seven, Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven is to amend an existing special permit to allow a property, to allow pre-existing use on a property known as 904 Main Street.
All right, this is a hearing of the city council for a special permit. Proponents will be given 20 minutes to make their presentation. Opponents will be given 20 minutes to speak, and then there will be a five-minute rebuttal for each side. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. For the record, my name is Attorney Tom Rook, with an office at 73 Chester Street in the city of Springfield. To my right is David Recrely, the proposed manager of the Ciroz Restaurant. And what we are asking you to do is to basically reinforce or reissue the special permit that was issued to the original petitioner back in 2011. That restaurant ran for, continuously through 2011 to 2015 or 16, when it was purchased by Black Jacks. They purchased the original entity, the stock, and they continued to operate it. They closed about six months ago. So, the proposed Ciroz Restaurant is going to be identical to what the original restaurant was, as well as Black Jacks. Nothing's going to change, and I think most importantly, most significantly, is Father White, the pastor of the Mount Carmel Church, has given his blessing and endorsed the license application. It went before the Southern Community Center, it went before the Springfield License Commission with Father White's blessing. There were restrictions that have been placed on the license that were originally placed in 2011 that we have always endorsed and cooperated with Father White. So, nothing is going to change, other than the fact that the petitioner, as you all know, when a special permit is issued, it's issued to that petitioner only. So, there's now a new petitioner stepping into the place, and we've agreed to all the conditions and conditions that were imposed by Father White, or requested by Father White. And I would ask that you endorse this special permit.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Seen none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. One more time, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. All right, seen none. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Before I close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner? Seen none? Are there any final comments, motions, amendments from the council? Seen none. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the special permit, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh. Absent, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twiggs.
Absent, Counselor Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos. Yes. When it's sufficient, special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards, under reasons.
Thank you.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. To incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of finding. All those in favor of accepting the reasons, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number eight, Mr. Clerk.
Item number eight is an application for a special permit for indoor amusement at the property known as 475 Sumner Avenue. This item was before the city council at the last hearings meeting, and it was sent to committee and is now back before the body.
Counsel Walsh.
Mr. President, I had the opportunity to actually attend the Forest Park Civic Association meeting when they were discussing this special permit, and I think all of us were pleasantly surprised about what they were asking, what they were asking for was different than what we had imagined when this went to committee. This was well-received by the Forest Park Civic Association, and they felt it would be a benefit not only to the neighborhood, but to the Nepalese community that would have a place to meet and to enjoy their culture in our city. There is a letter from the There is a letter from the president of the Civic Association that I believe Ken, you may have, from the Forest Park Civic Association, but unanimously supported by the neighborhood. So, I'm hoping that it will also be unanimously supported by the city council tonight.
Is the petitioner here tonight? We don't typically open up the hearing if the petitioner isn't here. Phil, have you heard from the petitioner at all?
Mr. President, and I, I think that Counselor Walsh is right and I think that this would be a great benefits to the neighborhood, but I don't think that we should approve the matter without him here. So, I'd make a motion that we continue it until the next hearings meeting in hopes that he'll attend so we can approve it.
Motion made by Counsel Fenton to continue the matter, seconded by Counsel Marcus Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Is there any further business before this council?
I have no further business for the city council.
All right, seeing none. Counselors, I, I just want to, one, one second. I just want to go over our, our schedule for our budget hearings that are going to be coming up. We have a, our first budget hearing scheduled for the 30th of May, Tuesday, the 30th, at 5:00. Another one is scheduled for the 31st at 4:00 and June 1st at 5:00. And then our, our final budget hearing will be before our next regular meeting on June 5th at 5:00. Our goal is to take a vote on Wednesday, June 14th. And so, that would give us enough time between our last budget hearing and between the time that we take our final vote to consider our options before then. I also have other meetings, additional meetings scheduled for the 15th and the 19th, in case we need those. If we don't, then we'll cancel, cancel them as we go. Okay? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll be, we'll be adjourned until our next regular meeting on June 5th. Thank you.